Call to order the New Kent County Board of Supervisors, June 13th, 2022, meeting to order. Ms. Page, could you lead us in the invocation pledge, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I said you all stand, please. Father God, we come to you in the sweet and precious name of Jesus. Dear God, as we come this evening, we ask your blessings on this meeting. We ask that everything that is done will be done in decent and in order, Lord God. We ask that you will instill in us everything that we need to make the best decisions for New Kent County and her citizens, Lord God. Father God, we pray blessings over every household that is represented here. And Lord God, these and all blessings, we ask in your mighty name, say amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Page.
My honor.
Welcome, everyone, this evening. Ms. Watkins, will you call a roll, please?
Mr. Evelyn?
Here.
Mr. Tiller?
Here.
Ms. Page?
Here.
Mr. Steers?
Here.
And Mr. Lockwood?
Here.
Again, good evening, welcome. Let's get started. We've got a pretty busy agenda tonight. First item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Does anybody have any changes? Corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Tiller.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented and that it be made part of the record.
Thank you, Ms. Tiller. Any discussion? Ms. Watkins, we poll the members, please.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. We have a few special presentations this evening. First is Heart Saver Hero Awards. Chief Opett.
Mr. Chairman, lady and gentleman of the board. Mr. Hathaway, Ms. Watkins, good evening. I come before you this evening in celebratory mode to recognize and honor some outstanding, life-saving work performed by personnel of your fire rescue department, as well as by one of your constituents. Earlier today, I had the opportunity to attend the middle school awards ceremony to watch my eldest receive a few awards of academic achievement. Naturally, that was a very proud Papa moment for me. Well, that same sense of pride holds true as I stand before you and everyone here this evening to recognize a few members of my other family, whose dedicated life-saving efforts defied odds and made it possible for three individuals to be with us here this evening. Indeed, this is a definite proud Papa moment for me as the leader of your New Kent Fire Rescue Department. Tonight, I ask that you join me in celebrating laudable success by honoring some of our first response providers with the American Heart Association Heart Saver Hero Awards. The Heart Saver Hero Award was established by the American Heart Association as a way of saying thank you for performing the heroic act of CPR, a critical link in our chain of survival. These meaningful awards are indeed to recognize the heroes that have stepped in to help save a life during an emergency. This evening, we have three particular incidents we want to present for recognition and commendation. All of these events possess similar characteristics in that each had the key ingredients for success. Those key ingredients are early notification to our 911 system, early CPR, early defibrillation, and advanced resuscitation by EMS. So without further delay, I would like to share a few stories with you. Ms. Moran, would you like to come up here with me? Or not, your choice. Ms. Moran, Stephanie, is 52 years old and a two-and-a-half-year cardiac arrest survivor. In December of 2019, pre-COVID, having a similar issue, I'm sorry, Ms. Moran was home alone when she began experiencing numbness in her arms. She recalls having similar issue within the weeks prior but didn't think twice about it because it was intermittent and had resolved. This particular day, her arm numbness returned and radiated pain into her jaw, which raised concern. Ms. Moran called her husband to let him know she thought something was wrong. As he stated to, started to make his way home to check on her, he called 911 to have EMS come check on her as well. NKFR arrived to find Ms. Moran, alert and indicating she was having pain in her chest and jaw. Early in the encounter with Ms. Moran and the crew from the NKFR, she suffered a sudden cardiac arrest. Crews worked quickly to perform CPR on Mrs. Moran and delivered early defibrillation to correct what could have been a fatal abnormality in her heart rhythm. After performing CPR for seven minutes and the early defibrillation, NKFR crews were able to restore Mrs. Moran's heart to a normal rhythm. NKFR crews had already determined that she was suffering from a heart attack prior to her cardiac arrest. But once they were able to get her pulse back, they worked quickly to mobilize Life Evac for rapid transport to VCU Health downtown. Mrs. Moran underwent coronary reperfusion in the hospital and was discharged neurologically intact, only citing some minor memory issues and some minor trouble walking, but has been able to resume her life with some minor changes. In the time since the survival, Mrs. Moran had enjoyed spending time with her family. Additionally, she has been able to experience the life of her two grandchildren and a third one on the way. I'd like to recognize the providers. Firefighter/paramedic Donald D.J. Carter. They can come up. Firefighter/EMT Michael Irvin. Gentlemen, excellent job. Thank you. Ms. Moran, do you have any? Anything? You okay?
Yeah.
Here, here you go.
I'd just like to say thank you for everything you all did for me.
This is kind of our challenge coin that we offer. That kind of you put something by it.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. White? Ms. White? Oh, there she is. All right, our second incident. Shawanda White is a 47-year-old and a two-and-a-half-year cardiac arrest survivor. In January of 2020, another pre-COVID, Mrs. White was going about what she thought to be a normal day. She recalls experiencing some leg pain, and she believed was just from something she had done moving around throughout the day. As Mrs. White was preparing for bed that evening, her husband found her unresponsive. NKFR crews responded and worked quickly to get Mrs. White to the hospital. Shortly after leaving her residence on the way to the hospital, Mrs. White suffered from a sudden cardiac arrest, later found to be caused by a blood clot in her leg that traveled to her lungs. Upon recognition of her sudden cardiac arrest, crews immediately pulled over so the driver could assist in her resuscitation. Crews were able to get a pulse back on Mrs. White, but she arrested multiple times during transport. Crews continued administering CPR and resuscitative efforts throughout transport to the hospital. Mrs. White eventually regained and sustained her pulse after transfer of care at the hospital. Mrs. White was eventually discharged from the hospital, neurologically intact, and since her survival, she was able to attend the college graduation of her 24-year-old son and cherishes the time that she is able to spend with her husband and her two children. I'd like to recognize the few, the, these providers for this incident. Battalion Chief Jason Bishop, Lieutenant Michael Leonard, EMT Angela Book, and firefighter/paramedic Jared Alom, he cannot be with us tonight. Ladies and gentlemen? Absolutely. Please.
Good afternoon, and I will be brief. Dear members of the New Kent Board of Supervisors and Fire and Rescue, on behalf of my wife, Shonda, and our family, we thank you for acknowledging the actions of New Kent County Fire and Rescue. I'd like to share a brief story. One day, Shonda's lead physician at Centurion Norfolk General Hospital, Dr. G came to visit. She asked Shonda if she believed in God. If she, yes. Dr. G, I'm sorry. Dr. G, the physicians, the physician, Dr. G stated the physician team played a vital role in her being alive. However, it was something larger than their part that led to her survival. In many ways, Shonda is a miracle based on her health condition from a couple of years ago, and her devotion to God is a testament of that. However, I must thank the New Kent County Fire and Rescue as your actions allowed her medical treatment and not forget to, to, I'm sorry, to have a chance in survival. So thank you for your dedication, how long you stayed at the hospital, and the kind of words you shared with me. So Jason, Michael, Angela, and Jared, thank you for the critical role you played in her survival. Thank you from the bottom of my heart, sir.
Just for your word. Okay. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. White. Okay, Mr. Ryan. Our third incident. Robert Ryan is a 66-year-old male and two-month survivor from a sudden cardiac arrest back in April of 2022. Mr. Ryan was out working in his front yard when his neighbor was passing by and noticed that Mr. Ryan collapsed. The neighbor, Mr. Allen Fisher, he is with us here this evening, if you can please stand. Stopped to check on him and found him to be unresponsive. Mr. Fisher acted quickly to shout for his wife, checking around the back of the home while activating the 911 system. EMS arrived to the scene within five minutes and immediately began performing CPR. Crews were able to get a pulse back on Mr. Ryan and quickly began transport to VCU Health Emergency Center at New Kent, where he was stabilized and ultimately transferred to VCU Health System downtown. Mr. Ryan received target temperature management, which has been found to reduce neurological deficits in eligible candidates, and later received a coronary heart bypass graft to overcome a blockage that was found in the blood supply to his heart. Mr. Ryan remained hospitalized for 24 days but was discharged back home to his wife and his two daughters. Mr. Ryan remains neurologically intact and has no deficits with the exception of some short-term memory loss surrounding the incident. Mr. Ryan has since been able to return to work where he manages a large data center and is able to interact with his coworkers just as he was prior to the event. Now, in addition to recognizing the providers that worked on Mr. Ryan, NKFR and the family would like to recognize Mr. Alvin Fisher for his courageous acts and taking initiative to activate the 911 Emergency Response System. Mrs. Ryan and the family are internally grateful for your willingness to stop, assess the situation, and call 911. Without the early recognition and rapid activation of the 911 center, Mrs. Ryan speculated that Mr. Ryan's collapse could have gone unnoticed for a longer period of time, and with every minute elapsed without CPR, the chances of survival decreases by send it 7% to 10%. Mr. Ryan is part of a 7% statistic of those who survive a sudden cardiac arrest to discharge neurologically intact. So I first would like to present to you, Mr. Fisher, a Citizens Life Saving Award, presented to you in recognition of the selfless act of rendering life-saving aid to others in the time of need, awarded on this 13th day of June 2022. Now, in recognition of those providers, Captain Travis Longest, Lieutenant Paramedic Ryan Shelton, firefighter/paramedic Levi Dawkins, firefighter/Charles Pugh, and firefighter/paramedic Ladies and gentlemen? Okay, Mr. Ryan, would take the podium.
Yeah, I can't thank you enough. I'd also like to state that I think I'm just one example of many of why these type of services are critical for a community, and I certainly hope that New Kent continues to grow and provide even more of these services in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have come a long way in the last 10 years in fire rescue. This progress is without doubt a reflection of the rock-solid decisions made by this board and by those who preceded some of you. I know historically that when you as a board make decisions, you typically only hear the negative comments or are subjected to adverse treatment on social media. You really, you rarely hear thank you or great job. Well, tonight, through these awards and the circumstances and results that gave rise to them, you see tangible evidence of solid decisions you have all made. Decisions such as adding Station 5 into our system demonstrate that your leadership has truly made a difference and most definitely have made an invaluable difference in the lives of three grateful people here this evening. On behalf of them and our fire rescue department, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Anybody have anything they want to add?
No, they're gonna keep on them. They're gonna make me cry.
It was. Thank you, Chief. It's for sure that we've come a long ways, and I know my 15 years here from where we, where we started, so. And thanks for bringing those stories to the boards, and that's really heartfelt. And thank you to all the firefighters and paramedics, New Kent Fire and Rescue, and your professionalism. Next, we have Mr. Smollett, Small Business Close-Up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm not sure how we're gonna follow that one up.
It's gonna be tough.
That's, yeah. So Matt Smollett, your Director of Economic Development. I've got John Kling here tonight with Armor Enterprises out of Barrensville. You know, looking at his website, you know, the one thing that caught my eye, Jonathan King, owner, operator, husband, father. I like that. So he's here to talk about his business, and hopefully, I know he's got a stack of cards, so without further ado, there he is. He's right behind me.
Good evening, board, neighbors, visitors from out of town for other things. So I, my name is John Kling. I am currently active duty in the Marine Corps for another couple of weeks, and then I will be leaving active service to begin full-time in my business that I've been running part-time in my spare time when the government allows me to, since last year. So like I was introduced, I have started a LLC, Armor Enterprises. I provide polyurethane and polyurethane products from, from Armor Thane. So I'm a dealer applicator of this product. Particularly, I try to do bed liners. So if you're familiar with Linex or Rhino Liner, it's the same product, but I do it as a dealership model rather than a franchise. That allows me a lot of freedom to serve the community uniquely. So my entire system is mounted in a trailer, an enclosed trailer, so I come to the customer to do the work, provide the service. Now, I originally started my business plan last year, and as we know, the economics have changed a lot in just a few months. So last October, I got my equipment. I was all set up to go to every dealership in the area and provide them with bed liners, set up in their parking lots, do the work for them, go home and take care of business. So some economics have changed, and I have provided polyurethane products to all kinds of different applications since then, trying to have to adjust to the market itself. So I've done enclosed trailers, providing a nice durable floor with the polyurethane bed liner. It's a durable, skid-resistant, waterproof, it will not rot, will not fade, products that I'm confident in through our testing, and we have 20 years' experience with Armor Thane, with their products, that I can confidently bring to New Kent County as, like, I know this product, it works really good, and I'm happy to go and provide it to our neighbors here. So I, like I said, I've had to transition a little bit from just doing bed liners to boat trailers and decks and all kinds of whatever you can think of that I, you can apply this product to. It bonds to metal, fiberglass, wood, any prepared painted surfaces permanently. So with that, there's a little bit of caution you have to do on what you apply it to, but with, you can be confident that it will last a extremely long time and be durable throughout the lifetime that you have that whatever I apply it to. So that is my business. And I'm, like I said, transitioning from part-time running this to growing it as a full-time business from nine years of Marine Corps service, taking that experience with me to provide to New Kent County. So like I said, I have a stack of business cards. If you can think of an application for this, if you have a pickup truck, go ahead and give me a call. I'll come to you, or you can bring your truck to me if you'd rather just drop it off and have it picked up from you. I offer a lifetime warranty with all of my, my vehicle applications. We've done testing with that to be confident to say that there will be nothing wrong with the application and the product throughout the life of the vehicle. So that, that is what I bring to you guys tonight.
All right, thank you. Anybody have any?
I would.
Ms. Lockwood?
I know John very well. I've seen the product that he puts out. He does an incredible job. He's very meticulous, very considerate of the vehicle, or, didn't you do a garage floor?
Yes, so.
That turned out amazing.
And we're branding it to other, other applications for it. Through the, Armor Thane actually provides, they're a chemical company. They create all kinds of polyurethane. So one of their polyuretes is a garage floor coating. It looks identical to epoxy. However, you can walk on it within two hours. Epoxy takes days to set up, and it looks identical. You put the chips in it, looks great, you get all kinds of colors in it, and you get clear coat, top coat, you can just get clear, you just want to seal up the concrete, but then it hardens within hours. We were walking on that floor and, and just before we were done, we closed the garage doors and then the, which floor it was, they could put all their stuff back in at that same day.
And I just would like to add to, this young man is the real deal. I just would like to add too, this young man is the real deal. He served in our country for nine years in the Marine Corps, and he has served his community locally, in ways you wouldn't believe, some of the things that he's taken on to help his neighbors, cleaning up yards and cleaning up debris, and I know him through Proclaiming Grace, he's an active volunteer and just an incredible young man, and truly an asset to the community, and welcome your business and certainly you and your family, John. So, thank you.
Thank you. We have one more presentation this evening. On behalf of the board, we have a certificate of recognition. Somebody has to keep us organized, because we just don't look this good all the time. So Ms. Watkins, over there, that you probably never even noticed, was achieved Master Municipal Clerk professional. So she spent a lot of time on this program, and I would just like to read a little bit about what she achieved. The Master Municipal Clerk Program, or MMC, is the second and more advanced of the two professional designations granted by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. The MMC program is an advanced continuing education program that prepares participants to perform complex municipal duties. The program has an extensive and rigorous education component and a professional contribution component. The MMC applicant must demonstrate that they have actively pursued education and professional activities. Ms. Watkins was required as her employment to obtain her CMC, which stands for Certified Municipal Clerk designation, within five years, and she did so in February 2018. Although she was not required to do so, Ms. Watkins obtained the MMC in November of 2021. So on behalf of the board, Ms. Watkins, congratulations, and I'd like to present this with the board to you. The frame has not come in yet. We apologize for that, but it'll be here. Next, Citizens Comment Period. Bring the sign-up sheet up, please. When I call your name, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please. You'll be limited to three minutes. First is Ms. Trammell.
My name is Camilla Trammell, and my address is 800 Baptist Road, Yorktown, Virginia. I am president of the African-American Heritage Society of New Kent County, Virginia. We have been in existence since 2017, and this year marks our fifth anniversary. I am here to request museum space at the new Lenexa Fire Station at the historic RND Green Book site. I want to thank the Board of Supervisors for allowing me to speak this afternoon, and especially want to thank Ron Stiles for making the Black History Museum proposal to the Board of Supervisors. I also want to put the minds of the fire chief and his staff at ease. As we can see from the presentations this afternoon, the museum has no desire to obstruct or interrupt any emergency services at the fire station that may save a life or save a building from burning to the ground. A separate entrance and a separate parking will be ideal for the patrons that visit the museum. Typically, local museums are not open every day. That would include us. We may be open a Monday or a Friday, or by group appointment only. It may be open for a meeting once a month for about an hour or so. For Black History Month, we may be open a few extra days during the week. We would like to request about 1,000 square feet of museum space. I can read everybody's mind through mental telepathy as you ask me, what in the world are we going to put in that much space? I am so glad you asked that question. This museum will not be sheets of paper hanging on the wall, flapping in the wind from the air from the HVAC unit. Education will be our biggest display. We have 10 Freedom Bureau schools, five Rosenwald schools, 24 1-5 room color schools, New Kent Trainer School, and George W. Watkins. For our military, did you know that there were 13 African-Americans from New Kent that served in the Revolutionary War, other than James Lafayette? Did you know that there were African-Americans who fought in the War of 1812 from New Kent County? Did you know that there were 146 African-Americans that served in the United States Color troops, and one achieved the rank of Sergeant Major? Did you know that there were four African-Americans who served in the Spanish-American War, and William Anderson achieved the rank of Captain? Also, Reuben Burrell received the Distinguished Service Cross in 1918 for heroism in France during World War I, not to mention the zillions of African-Americans who served in World War II. And, 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 we do have, we do have information on everyone and everything that I just mentioned and much more. We also would like to have space for a conference room in which to have meetings, workshops, and training sessions without having to pay to use somebody else's building.
Ms. Trammell, I have to, I gotta treat everybody the same, so, 15 more seconds?
Okay, I got two more minutes, okay.
No, 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 no.
No more? Okay.
15 seconds, you can wrap it up.
If you would like to see what the society has to offer, and really want to see us in action, feel free to attend our fifth anniversary conference on New Kent County Black History, June 25th, beginning at 9:00 at the New Kent Forestry Center. And I just happen to have flyers for every last one of you. My request is for the Board of Supervisors to approve the RND site as a location for the new Black History Museum in New Kent County. I would like for all members of the society to stand, and even if you're not a member, I know you're here to represent, so you can stand up. Does anybody have any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Thank you very much. Can you get a copy of your speech? Give it to Ms. Watkins. Mr. Larry Reynolds?
I'm Larry Reynolds, 3351 Mount Pleasant Road, Providence Forge. Just a brief announcement, for the past several years, there has been a monthly coordination meeting between Matt Smolink, the Economic Development Director, and the New Kent Chamber of Commerce, past president, board member. These meetings have proven to be mutually beneficial. The past president changes annually, resulting in it taking months to establish a new close working relationship. The board recognizes the need for permanency in these meetings and for establishing similar communications with other state and county government officials and offices, but not necessarily in monthly meetings. To that end, the Chamber Board added a new permanent position to the board, the Government Liaison Director. The responsibilities of this director are to monitor activities, attend meetings and hearings, collect information, and make a factual report to the board about those activities that might have an impact on member businesses. This person is appointed by the president and serves at the will of the board. I have been appointed by President Erica Johnson to fill his new directorship and look forward to attending Board of Supervisors meetings in the future. And I want to personally thank each member of the Board of Supervisors for your service and the care and consideration you all have shown for the citizens and businesses of New Kent County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Mr. Smith?
I came to talk about recreation.
Can you state your name and address for the record, please, sir?
My name is William M. Smith, address 4240 Holly Fork Road, Barrensville.
Thank you.
I want to talk about recreation. New Kent has two very nice parks, but it's a good drive from where I live. Even people from West Point would come to the game. And also, I know the people in the medical field. But I want to thank them for coming to my age, aged about two years ago. I was six, and didn't know it, but I want to thank them for what they did.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. That ends the Citizens Comment Period. Next is the Residency Administrator's Report, Mr. Nguyen.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Hathaway, Marshall Nguyen with VDOT. This past month, we received 61 work orders, completed 105, and had five after-hour callouts. Finished their first cycle of primary mowing. Secondary mowing is started down in the Barrensville area. Currently, they're in the lower, I guess you call it the southeast end of Barrensville. Bridge crew has completed Deckport. They completed that last week on Holly Fork Road, and a cylinder break is scheduled for June 17th. They poured A4 concrete on that deck, and it's got to reach 4,000 PSI before we can open the bridge. They've got some other work they have to do, they have to strip the forms, which will be very tedious to get done, and I'll keep you abreast of that project as it goes along. Been doing pothole repairs, shoulder repairs, ditching, trash pickup through the county. Plan on starting a secondary primary mow probably next week. Try to get it done before the 4th of July. Couple other projects going on currently. I know you've seen the Route 60 overlay project, went by there this afternoon. Looks like they've completed all the tie-ins and started putting down the pavement marking. I expect that will be completed this week, tomorrow, the next day, I would say, from what I saw this afternoon. The Route 155 project, that's ongoing. I think they've completed all the tree removal, then the next step is the ditch work that they'll have, the contractor will have to do. Only have one speed study I want to mention. Good Hope Road, that's currently 45 miles an hour traffic engineering, checked that, did a ride review, along with Phillip and I did a ride review, and if speed limits go change to 40, we're just awaiting some more information for advisory signs on that road. Other than that, I don't have anything else, not unless y'all have any questions.
Thank you. Ms. Steers?
Yes, Mr. Nguyen, first of all, I just want to thank you for the meeting last week with you and your engineers, and Ms. Page, and the sheriff. I think we got a lot accomplished. And just to confirm, our next appointment is going to be on August the 16th, and then we do have a town hall meeting scheduled at Brickshire for you and your engineers to come and present the program there.
Have you sent anything confirming that?
I'm telling you.
Oh, you want me to go ahead and confirm that with my supervisors?
Yes, sir, you told me just to let you know-
We can do that.
-and that you would confirm-
And I'll copy you, and who else needs to come to that meeting?
Shane, I think Shane was there.
No, I mean, I know that, other than who owns-
No, just me.
Okay.
That's my district, yeah.
Okay, we can do that.
Okay, I appreciate it. That's it.
Ms. Tiller?
I wanted to thank you for the overlay on Route 63, Bottoms Bridge, but I went out that way this afternoon around 2, and they still hadn't completed the entrance at Longview.
When I went through, it looked like they were on it then.
Oh, okay, well, maybe they-
A roller was rolling ass off.
Okay, that's good, because that was a heck of a drop-off there.
Right.
And same entrance there, if you're coming down towards 60, the shoulder on the right, when they came through and they were doing the first wave-
Cut your mic on.
When they were doing the cuts, they parked a lot of equipment there on the shoulder. I know that's y'all's shoulder, but a lot of people use that shoulder to park on, and it's kind of rough if they could just-
What, Longview you talking about?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I'll get with the inspector, make sure that we get that-
Okay, just, I mean, they smoothed it out, because a lot of people use that for overflow for the business on the opposite corner.
Okay.
Park on the shoulder. No, thank you again. I've gotten more phone calls in the past two weeks about this, and we do appreciate it. That's it.
Ms. Lockwood?
Yes, sir. Mr. Nguyen, are we still on track, do you think, for the end of July for that bridge repair at Godanspoon, Holly Fork?
Yes.
So things are-
Pretty sure if not sooner.
Okay.
I will let you know as soon as the first cylinder break comes, that's going to be in a couple of weeks. I talked with the bridge superintendent today, and he said the first break was going to be June 28th. So a couple of weeks away, we'll see what that cylinder break is.
Okay.
And then once we find the cylinder break, we've got to strip all the forms. It's going to be a tedious process. Basically, they're going to have to get on their knees in that box and take every piece of form work out. It's going to have to come out in pieces, they can't come out in one big piece, so.
Okay, that's good. I just want to thank your maintenance crew, Joe Terry and his guys, Jeff getting a lot of work done on shoulders on Tabernacle. I did have a question about where they're working now, down towards the church where I think Jeff will remember, you guys did that work, the shoulder work in front of the church on Tabernacle, and around the corner, and that's where the equipment broke, and that stretch to where the road widens again has not been done too. So I'm hoping that while the equipment is in the area, that that portion can be done. And if you'd like to give me a call, Jeff, we can talk about it.
Yeah, we'll get your schedule for that.
Okay. Yeah, but thank you. I did have one question.
One?
One question about trees that are overhanging the road that are just a matter of time before they're on the road. Is that something that you guys deal with, or is it wait till it's on your road?
No, I mean, we look for those type of trees all the time. We check for danger trees, is what I call them. Either they're dead, or they're uprooted on one side. If we notice those, if you notice any, just let us know, we'll come and check it. And we have a tree contractor that, that works for us, and we put them on 30-day trees or emergency trees, which is within 24 hours-
Okay.
-to cut them.
All right, I'll send you some stuff.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Page?
Good evening, Mr. Nguyen. My fault, I just sent you pictures of the parking area, Virginia Natural Gas. The Sheriff's Department is up to several times a day monitoring and giving citations for parking, and- giving citations for parking. And I know they gave us like, I don't know, twenty-seven signs or something like that. And so we determined that we're not going to use all of them, but we're going to have to go in and put some more signs because they're knocking over the stop sign. They are absolutely ruining the, the property in front of Virginia Natural Gas. This, I was over there yesterday, and it's an absolute mess. And I think the Sheriff's Department is even going down one oh six toward the church because they're parking on the side of the road there. So if you could just check that out. I sent you pictures.
Yeah, my sign tech should have fixed those stop signs already. We, Phillip-
They did.
Phillip has gotten with the sign tech, and we're going to add some more. No parking signs in that area. The problem is their, their traffic engineering sign, the people that make signs, they're shut down for the next two weeks for inventory. And they'll be, you know, moving back up the first of the year. Once we get those signs-
The first of the year?
First of July, excuse me, carry year. First of July, excuse me. I misspoke. But that, that's on schedule to be, you know, add some more stops. No parking signs.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you for coming out this evening and your team.
Send me an address where we're going to have the meeting. Mr. Steers, okay? That way we can get it straight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marshall. Next is the adoption of the New Kent County Compensation and Classification Study results.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. You have with you in your packets the executive report performed by McGrath Human Resources Group for the recent compensation and classification study that was performed for New Kent County employees. This study consisted of comparing our current salaries for every single employee in the county against seventeen localities around the region and area with the purpose of determining whether or not our pay grades were consistent with the market expectations and competitive with the communities around us. As a result of this, that, this study, in the executive report, you'll find a recommendation to change our pay grades, and therefore various salary recommendations were recommended for each county employee. Now, at your last meeting last month, you adopted a budget that set aside one million, four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars to address the results of the salary study. And I can tell you, that did not fully address the results of the salary study, but it gets close. Definitely, we were confined by the constraints of our, our budget. But I think we did a really good job in getting close to implementing the full results of the salary study. It is our goal that the results, the salary increases for the employees would become effective at the beginning of the fiscal year, which is July one. You have a spreadsheet showing my recommendations for each county employee. Right beside my recommendation, you'll see the consultant's recommendation as well as a comparison. And that is what I used as my goal and tried to get as close as I could for, for each employee member. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Anybody have any questions?
Just one. How close, the one point four three nine million, or whatever it was, how close is that?
The actual amount of all the recommendations total, well, the salary increases itself was one million, one hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars. But I had to add in the increase in benefits and taxes, which was another two hundred and eighty-one thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. So we were at a total of, I'm sorry, that's for county employees minus, minus social services employees, where I broke that out because we pay a portion of their salary and the state pays the lion's share. So for county employees, we were at one million, four hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and two thousand. Then you would add another twenty-five thousand dollars for our share of the social services employees, for a total of one million, four hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred and two dollars. So we were pretty close to that, that limit.
So are we going to try to make up the difference next year? Is that our goal?
Yeah. The, the way the consultant broke it down, because the total fix, we anticipate to be probably close to about three million dollars. So to be affordable to us, what the consultant did is recommended everybody getting up to the appropriate pay grade, which creates an issue. It helps employees because they're receiving pay increases, but it creates a compression issue because now we have everybody sitting at the bottom of, of the pay grade. The hope is that year two, we would come back and do additional adjustments based on time and grade, time, a ser- time of service.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chair. So my question becomes, if it's, it's already in the budget that has been approved for this year. So what are we looking at next year? Does this allow us the opportunity if we need to hire employees? Does this allow us the opportunity if we, for increases, i.e., will employees get this increase, and then can we afford a three, five percent increase, a cost of living increase on the following year? That, that concerns me. The other thing that concerns me is I didn't receive this until after he had gone out. And so at the end of the day, I, I really don't know how we can comment and address it. I went through it, and I can absolutely tell you that I am not comfortable with some of the recommendations. And, and I expressed it to the consultant that we had. But those are my concerns. How will affect, will we be able to maintain our budget for 2024? And if the employees are bought up, then will they be eligible for increases in 2024? Or will it be, just be compression in 2024? Or will it be, we hope you're happy with what you got, and we'll try again next year?
Well, first, as, as far as the scheduling, you know, originally, when we signed the contract with the consultant, the consultant had a six-month period to present the results, which would have been after the July one fiscal year. So we did compress the schedule with the consultant. The final results were sent to you on May thirteenth, which was about two weeks prior to the consultant making the recommendation to you and prior to me sending this out to all of the directors as, as well. What we noticed, though, is errors in the original spreadsheet of the consultant. So I sent this out to directors, asking them to review their departments to make sure that we have them properly classified as far as title and position and time in service, and that we have the salaries correct too. And I'm glad I did that because we did identify some additional corrections that, that we've made as, as well. As far as what the salaries will look like, or what phase two will, will look like, what's going to guide this is available funding, definitely. So we will take a look at and identify the amount of funding that, that we have available. We will then develop a formula based on, yes, everybody will get a cost of living. It's my goal, that everybody will get a cost of living increase. And then on top of that, there'll be a different, there'll be an additional percentage based on years of service. That's the plan of how to apply this and how to kind of decompress the schedule as well. Now, we want to decompress while keeping in line with the current cost of living because we don't want to fall behind. So that, that's the plan.
Anyone else?
So in, if I may, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hathaway. So basically, this year, we're dealing with getting everybody up to the level, the recommended level, kind of a minimum standard, but kind of getting everybody moved up to that more competitive wage that we were striving for. And then next year, obviously, God knows what cost of living increases should look like. But on top of that, we want to deal with the compression. That's where we'll start to see the longer standing employees separating a little more from the new people. So, okay.
And, and, and just an observation too, and the consultant touched on it at her presentation. We found that we're doing a decent job when we initially hire people at a decent rate. But where we're falling short is bringing people through the career schedule at, at a sufficient rate of, of time. The consultant has put in some recommendations so we can annually look at our progress for each position and make sure they're moving through our, our pay grades. I'd also like to make it, make, state the fact that I'm, I'm very happy that if this is adopted, the minimum wage for New Kent County will be fifteen dollars per hour, which I think that is a huge accomplishment. And I can tell you, I have vacancies right now at less than, and I'm not getting any applications for it. It's kind of tough when McDonald's and some of the other local businesses are, are doing better at, at positions that, that we're recruiting for. So I think it's a huge plus for the county.
So, Mr. Chair?
So have we looked at increases of a dollar amount versus a percentage amount?
That, that's exactly what's being proposed to you today. This is a dollar amount for
Any other comments? I am glad that we were able to get the fifteen dollar minimum wage up. That's, I think that's huge. As far as next year, who knows what the economy would be. So it's hard to, hard to guess what, what kind of situation we'll be in. So. But I guess this is good stuff. Are there any other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Lockwood?
If there are any other comments, I'd like to propose that I move to adopt the results of the New Kent County Compensation and Classification Study performed by McGrath Human Resources Group and authorize the county administrator to implement his FY twenty-three employee salary recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood. Any other discussion? If none, Ms. Watkins, poll the members, please.
Ms. Page? Aye. Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Motion passes. Next item is consideration of proposed amended federal grants policy.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. I'm last minute standing for my director, and she has a family emergency. So, so in front of you is a draft of the amended federal grants policy for your consideration this evening. And, okay, so our current policy for the federal grants was based off the uniform guidance issued by the APA. So that stands for auditor for, auditor of the public accounts. And so our original policy, it was approved in June of 2020. Since then, the APA has released a few updates to their uniform guidance, which, you know, governs our policy. And so at the recommendations of, of our external auditors, our policy needs to be updated to include the same kind of language that the updated uniform guidance has. So specifically, in that document, under the procurement section, starting on page seven, and goes on to page thirteen, so our policy needs to include the, a paragraph referring to using the domestic preferences in our procurement. And so as such, our finance team has drafted the amended federal grants policy for, for y'all to consider. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Anybody have any questions? So this is just an auditor wanting us to clean up?
Yeah, like a comment, yeah.
A policy?
Basically, I mean, our procurement has already, you know, following the standard, but it's just not written in our document. So this one would fix the document, documentation.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Tiller?
I move to approve the proposed amended federal grants policy as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Tiller. Ms. Watkins, we poll the members.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Motion passed. It's after seven o'clock, so we can start our public hearings tonight. We have seven public hearings this evening. First one is application CUP dash zero one dash two two, Borrego Solar, Resolution R dash one two, two two. Conditional use permit to construct a three-megawatt solar system on approximately twenty-three acres located within tax parcel twenty-seven six J in eastern New Kent County. Ms. LaDuke?
Thank you, sir. Just going to give a brief overview of the application and then turn it over to the applicants. So representatives from Borrego Solar have applied for a conditional use permit to construct a three-megawatt solar facility on approximately twenty-three acres of land located east of Altham Road and north of Henrico County Regional Jail East and Polish Town Road. There's a map in your packet for reference. The property is part of a larger parcel that is zoned industrial and is designated as industrial in the comp plan. Prior to submission of the CUP, the applicant held several neighborhood outreach meetings to notify the local property owners of the interest to construct the solar facility and receive feedback. Facility is proposed to be accessed off Polish Town Road. The project will not cause any increased impacts to county services, and the applicant will facilitate training for emergency personnel. Buffers and screening will be required. Construction will be restricted to daylight hours. Decommissioning will also be required at the end of the project life. The planning commission considered this application at their meeting on March twenty-first and voted eight to one to forward a favorable recommendation to the Board. Their meeting was held prior to the adoption of the solar generation facilities ordinance that was adopted in May. The applicants have submitted a revised version of Resolution R dash twelve dash twenty-two that addresses several waiver requirements, or waiver, excuse me, waiver requests to the newly adopted standards, and the applicants will address these requests during their presentation. I'm going to introduce Jesse Robinson and Andy Kavanaugh with Borrego Solar. I'm going to introduce Jessie Robinson and Andy Kavanaugh with Borrego Solar.
Hey, good evening. I'm Jessie Robinson, the project developer with Borrego, and we're representing Weir Creek LLC, or John, Mr. John Kenny, tonight with this application. And I've talked to y'all before, so just I'll run through this briefly. But just to recap, Borrego is a family-founded private company. We've been operating for about forty years, developing solar projects across the nation. We've built over nine hundred megawatts of solar in the country. And the main places we've developed projects are California, New York, Illinois, Massachusetts, and we're in Virginia. And this table here just gives an idea of the different types of solar projects that could exist. One is utility scale, which is already in the county. I believe that twenty-megawatt project is a larger-scale project. What we're presenting to y'all is part of the D G R F P. So we are applying in the R F P for Dominion. That's one way to have small-scale solar in New Kent County. And so that, that's three megawatts or less, which this project's three megawatts. And the reason we chose this site is for a couple of reasons. The first one is that there aren't residences located around the property. It's north of the Henrico County Jail and south of the Warini Trail, County Trail System. And so there aren't surrounding neighbors on this site, and we are accessing the site from Polish Town Road, which is less trafficked than Route thirty, for example. There's a lot goes into finding a site that could work for solar, and this one met those requirements, not impacting wetlands, interested landowner, and minimal visibility, and also access to interconnection infrastructure. And then just another idea of where the site is located. We are, like I said, accessing off of Polish Town Road instead of Route thirty. And highlighted there is the correctional substation, which was ultimately where the energy will plug into. Hand it off to Andrew.
Good evening. Andrew Kavanaugh, civil engineer with Borrego. Thank you for your time this evening. So, quick overview of the layout plan as submitted to the county. This is a three-megawatt, approximately twenty-five acre fixed-tilt system. The best part about the fixed-tilt system, especially with a property in a parent parcel like this, is that these are able to withstand up to thirty percent racking tolerances, which is much higher than the county's recommended threshold for development on, on a parcel as well. The other positive of this is we're able to conform the project to the land and not the other way around. So this minimizes the amount of grading that we have to do on-site. It's planned to be on-site for about thirty-five to forty years, adhering to all setbacks based on the county's initial ordinance. Located sixteen-hundred-and-twenty-five feet back from Route thirty-three, so it's tucked back in there nicely with an existing seven-hundred-foot mature vegetated buffer screened from Route thirty-three. The site suitability, we already talked, we discussed its distance from Route thirty-three. There's about sixty acres of corridor frondage to be developed that's already there. It's already has established utilities on-site, what we call a shovel-ready site for projects. So these are mainly more prioritized for development. So this allows this back portion, the twenty-five acres that we'll be developing on, to be utilized for solar while leaving the, the front ready for development for things like Home Depot, Amazon Distribution Facility, things of that nature. As I discussed, the utilities are already there. They have not been developed deeper into the site. So this causes more concern for development later on in the project. We won't be disturbing any wetlands or any impacts to the resource protection areas on-site. And as I mentioned, this, this development conforms to the land, so it minimizes grading. And then one of the biggest questions and concerns we get is tree clearing. So we'll be taking about twenty-five acres of trees, which is a carbon footprint offset of about three-hundred-and-forty-five tons. However, what we bring with the development of these three megawatts is ninety-four thousand five hundred tons of carbon offset. I'm going to skip down to decommissioning before I touch on stormwater management. As proposed and submitted to the county, the decommissioning plan is planned to return the land to its pre-construction nature. Slated to enter into Dominion's R F P. Dominion does not post bond for decom, is a state public utility. However, we use high-credit organizations with a low likelihood of bankruptcy, so that this is generally not a concern for us. And this will be entered into the shared solar program, and the decom bond can still be conditioned for the new buyer. Moving down to stormwater management. We realized that this was a concern for not just the county, but the residents of the county as well. So we did a high-level analysis of, of the stormwater for this site. We spoke with Josh and the Environmental Department, myself, Quentin Wood, who's here with us tonight, who was another project engineer with Borrego. So we took, took a high-level analysis to confidently be able to manage the rate and runoff in the project in accordance with Virginia's code, as well as D E Q's new stormwater memorandum. And what this memorandum states is that all panels and poles are considered impervious, or disconnected, impervious, if you will. So this applies to both the quantity and the quality of the water and stormwater management on-site. I misspoke earlier, I apologize. This won't be, this will be Dominion's R F P, not shared solar, I apologize. So moving down after this, we've, we've got a few plans and overviews that will depict some of that high-level stormwater analysis, as it is one of the main concerns for, for the county and the residents. And as opposed to some of the other projects that the county has seen in the past and other A H Js within Virginia, the B M Ps that we design will remain on-site throughout the life of the project. So the initial analysis of the quality of the post-development conditions, we've analyzed and sussed out all of the appropriate areas for forested open space managed turf and impervious. These values will determine the runoff requirement and the volume and pollutant removal needed for the site. And that'll lead us into implementing the appropriate structural and non-structural B M Ps to address said volume. And then moving down to our secondary analysis of pre-development conditions. The site is situated on two river basins. On the north side, containing six smaller drainage areas is the York River Basin, and on the south side is the James River Basin. Current condition of the site, as I'm sure most of you know, is forest and utility right-ofways, and there are currently no B M Ps on-site. And then moving over to our quantity for our post-development conditions, this helps to provide a plan for us to address said, said measures. We're going to be implementing stormwater channels to regulate the rates and volume for channel and flood protection. We've analyzed the one in ten-year at this time. We'll be able to divert runoff from some, some of the smaller drainage areas on-site and consolidate where we have the most appropriate room to manage this with the B M Ps proposed. And then, as it stands, our initial rates have been reduced upwards of ten percent from, from pre-development to post-development with the, with the said B M Ps on-site. We also ran a model for the site, ran through InfoWorks, brought in all the site features, environmental conditions around, and just wanted to give everybody a general overview of what this site will look like once developed in a full turnkey state. And at the front of the parcel, you'll see the B M Ps that were previously discussed. And again, more high-level overview. On the right, you'll see the correctional facility, and then a planometric view as well. Moving on to the landscape plan that we have proposed to the county. Just wanted to give a little rendering of the areas of concern. It's been brought to our attention, and it was a concern of ours throughout the development phase as well, that the Warini Trail runs right behind the site. We obviously don't want this to be an eyesore to anybody enjoying the recreational facilities of New Kent County. So what we've decided to do is proactively try to meet to the best of our abilities the new ordinance and performance standards for this. So on the middle to, I would call northeast area, where the Warini Trail backs into the tucked-in area of the site, we'll have a twenty-foot vegetated buffer. And then on the left of that, we'll have a no-mow natural buffer area. This is also an area outside of our fenced, fenced-in, developable area that we are looking into hand-felling trees to provide more habitat to wildlife outside of the fenced-in area. And on the southwest corner of the site, coming down Polish Town Road, we will be, we are looking to provide a twenty-five-foot vegetative screening as well. And then behind that, another twenty-five feet of no-mow or natural buffer area, hand-felled trees. And our anticipation is to plant sporadically, as to not make an allay of trees that raises the question, what's behind there? We wanted to make it look conform to the natural environment as much as possible. As I touched on earlier, the Warini Trail, by providing this no-mow area or the natural vegetative buffer, whichever you'd prefer, this helps to develop the area for screening at a much faster rate. We'll also be using a pollinator mix in between the impervious panel area in between site, as well as the, that helps provoke the local flora and fauna, as I touched on, the hand-fell trees as well for habitat creation and stimulation. We also have looked into, and are still currently looking into, providing and prescribing a supplemental seed mix, regional seed mix, so to speak, that will help bring back the environment to its natural state at a much sooner rate. And then below that, you will see the, the vegetative dimensions that were previously discussed. Finally, the decommissioning plan, as I spoke on earlier, we have all of our, our values and our numbers that we calculated out for the, for the decommissioning estimate that was submitted to the county with our plans. I won't bore you with the numbers, but the general idea is to remove everything on-site, all concrete, M V trenching, L V trenching, solar panels, posts, modules, and bring that back to its pre-development state. We can seed that, and with permanent seeding or temporary seeding, depending on what is to follow this development. After thirty-five, forty years, if industrial development is suited for this site and wants to move in, we can stabilize it with temporary seeding to get it ready for development by coming right behind us. Recently, the panels that we've specced for this project, Canadian Solar, they recently passed third-party leaching tests. These panels are ninety-nine percent non-hazardous material and ninety-five percent recyclable. And we also referenced the Solar Energy Technologies Office, March of 2022, end of P V life study. That would, that is, references a lot of studies, investments, and projections for the future of recycling solar, solar industry panels. And that's aiming to reduce the cost by more than half at 2030, which reduces the cost to three dollars. And this project will be aiming for the Dominion, as I stated earlier and clarified, this project will be aiming for the Dominion D G R F P. And I will turn it back over to Jessie.
Thanks. Just to close it out, last two slides. Like Kelly touched on, we did hold a community meeting for this project. We sent out a couple mailers ahead of time notifying of the meeting, and there were two attendees, Mr. John Kenny, the landowner, and his business partner. Not a big surprise, because there aren't many residences surrounding the property, but that was important to us. And then after the meeting in March, we heard from some additional neighbors next to the twenty-megawatt system. And so I sent letters out to them, trying to reach out to them. And I did speak to Mr. Sam Hyde on April seventh, who mentioned stormwater concerns. And for benefits of small-scale solar, they are listed here. But I think probably the greatest ones to the county is it does increase local revenue in terms of taxes and the voluntary C U P payment offered to you all that could go towards whatever project of your choosing. So with that, oh, yeah, just to outline the red lines to the resolution, like Kelly mentioned. This is just to keep the conditions as they are stated, so they aren't in conflict with the new solar ordinance that was passed in May. So the last three on that list are just to maintain them as they are, so they're not in conflict with the ordinance, Section Two Development Standards C. That's a new addition to the resolution. Kind of clarifying, there was a new condition added to the ordinance about like screening utility poles. This would be to maintain current vegetation screening of the poles and from cables from the P O I location to the site, that would be not visible. The rest of those lines would continue to be underground. It's just the, the P O I poles along the road for Dominion Energy to be able to access those. They need to be above ground, so. But happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'll probably open up the public hearing, then we might have some questions after that.
Sure.
Open a public hearing. Did you bring a sign-up sheet, please? No one signed up? All right, I'll close the public hearing. Anybody have any questions, Ms. Robinson?
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Lockwood.
I appreciate y'all providing the maps that show the trail, the Warini Trail. It's really hard to tell where you're going to be and where the trail is, just, you know, taking a look at it on a map or... And I, I got to be honest with you, you know, you guys have done a good job kind of hitting all the buttons and everything. But we had a gentleman that spoke earlier this evening about the parks that we have in the county, and we don't have a lot. We don't, this is the only one that provides any, you know, open recreation for folks on this end of the county. And it really just seems to be in conflict with a nature trail to be coming up on, you know, a solar farm. It just doesn't seem to fit. And I'm, I'm, I've had a hard time getting past that because, you know, it, it is a beautiful area for people to enjoy riding bikes and walking and all that stuff. And, and, you know, for this to change so dramatically what the, what it would look like in that area. To you guys, solar farms might be a beautiful thing. I, I have not had one single person that has voiced a favorable interest in, in this project at all. But on, on the contrary, I've had several. And I think you guys are probably catching the bad end of the, the, the last one that we experienced. And I'm, I'm afraid I won't be able to vote for this because of the impact to the trail and, and a lot of promises that were made previously that weren't followed up on. I, I literally drove through there today on my way here. And years later, it still looks like hardly a park-like setting. So I appreciate, I appreciate the effort you guys put into it. And like I said, I think you hit a lot of the buttons that were concerns, but that, that proximity to the nature trail is kind of a game changer for me. Yes?
Thank you, Ms. Lockwood. Yes, ma'am.
We would be happy to work with you to find a way for you to feel comfortable that the system's properly screened from the trail, so that it wouldn't be visible. We're definitely open to finding ways to do that.
I just don't know that, you know, with the topography of the land out there, that, you know, I live in the woods, so I know, I know what a hundred feet looks like through the trees. And I know what two hundred feet looks like through the trees. And, you know, for, for it to be backed up to an industrial area or something like that, I could see where it wouldn't be an issue where you're looking to put this. But to be in one of the, you know, crown jewels of our outdoor recreation in the, in New Kent, I just don't see how you could get past that look when you're coming down the trail and there's a twenty-five acres of stuff reflecting back at you.
I completely understand the concern. However, what, from our analysis of the comprehensive plan, this is slated to be industrial in the future. So we believe this to be the lesser of what could be two evils in terms of high-grade, large industrial development buildings, big lots, clear-cut trees. And once that land is gone, it's gone for good, once it becomes developed industrial. So the, the benefit of this is that thirty-five to forty years later, it goes back, and it can be reforested again as well.
I understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else have any? This was, this was county-owned this property at one point, right? And then we, and then we sold it, I know it was before my time, but what's that?
Yes, sir. This property was once owned by the paper mill in West Point, and it was deeded to the county, which we deeded it to the Economic Development Authority, who put out an RFP for proposals for it to be developed as an industrial park, in which Mr. Kenny submitted a proposal, and that was selected, and it was given, sold to Mr. Kenny.
For industrial?
For industrial, yes.
Just to help add additional context to your question. Let's go back up here. So Mr. Kenny, I have talked to him quite extensively about this parcel, as like you said, it was purchased with the intent of industrial. And so Mr. Kenny has prepped this portion of the property for industrial use. He's used his own funds to have building pads here, to have access from Route 30, and has invested his own funds for utilities. So this system would be off of Polish Town Road, which we have been told is not suitable for large, like industrial trucks or commuting. And so it wouldn't be taking away the ability for this parcel to still be used for industrial. It's just a way for multi-use of the parcel.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Chairman?
Yeah.
If there's no further discussion or questions?
Is there any other discussion? Ms. Steers?
Yes, before you make that motion, when you were here previously, I asked the question about decommissioning the panels, and you said that they were doing some studies on how to dispose of them without burying them in landfills. And what is that? What's the alternative way of disposing of these toxic panels without burying them, which would affect our soil and our water?
I hear that a lot. Like Andy said, Andrew said earlier in the presentation, 99% of the panels are deemed non-hazardous, and 95% have the ability to be recycled. So it's really just a matter of economics today. Panels could be recycled, it just doesn't really make sense, but by 2030, the cost should be down by half, and I think there's just going to be a large number of recycling plants for panels across the nation. If someone wanted to do it today, they could, it just probably wouldn't make sense economically. But in 20 to 30 years, there's going to be a lot of projects that are currently built that are going to have to be decommissioned, and there's going to be a big need for recycling. So that's where they would, that's where they would go.
Well, and not only the panels, but most of the radiation is not from the panels, from what I, my research shows, but it's from the industrial equipment used to store the energy.
I'm not familiar with any radiation involved. What did your study cite for?
Beg your pardon?
What, what equipment was cited for?
The equipment that you guys use to store the energy.
Oh, could you be thinking of storage?
Right.
Oh, there's no storage for this project. There's no battery storage.
So where does the energy go once it's produced?
It goes directly into the distribution grid.
Into what?
The grid, distribution?
Yeah.
Substance. And who owns that?
Dominion Energy's electricity grid.
Cool. Well, you know, I mean, I agree with Ms. Lockwood, it's, they are unsightly, and according to a Michigan State's university study, corn sequesters 36,000 pounds of carbon per acre per year. So an acre of grass draws down about 920 pounds of carbon. So an acre of solar panels, where corn once could be grown, would be a net loss of 35,000 pounds of carbon, taken from the atmosphere. So global warming could be blamed on solar panel farms.
I'd like to...
Could be.
Yeah, I'd like to first recall that this parcel is not currently used for agriculture.
I know, ma'am, but I'll tell you something, we, we're, this whole world is in for some tough times, I think, coming ahead. There's already food shortages, even here, worldwide. There may come a time, we need that 23 acres to plant corn. And if it's tied up for 30 or 40 years with panels, we can't eat panels. See what I'm saying? So I think, New Kent County only has 210 square miles of land, and you're talking about using a parcel, you got another group back there wanting to use a parcel, we've already approved one group to use a parcel. So it's like, it may not be crops there now, but you're taking valuable farmland that we could possibly need in the near future. I'm not talking 30 years from now when you decommission, I'm talking maybe five or 10 years. Have you considered any of that?
So very valid points, and I appreciate your perspective. However, I think you'll find if you run the soils report on the site and do a topography analysis, that this site would never potentially be great for agricultural use. It's, it just doesn't have the conditions or the features that are going to produce a great yield. And that is one of the bonuses to this, is we get to use this for one of the best purposes.
I would say timber is a crop. I would disagree with you on that.
Yeah. Anyway, that's the only comments I have right now. Thank you.
Ms. Chairman?
Ms. Lockwood?
If there's no further discussion, in order to address and protect and promote public convenience, necessity, general welfare, and good zoning practices in the county, I move to deny application CUP-01-22.
Thank you, Ms. Lockwood. Is there any discussion on the motion? If none, Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members?
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
No.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
And Mr. Avalon?
Aye. Motion denied. I want to take a five-minute break. Call the meeting back to order. Next item, application CUP-04-22, Chamberton Solar, Vincent LLC, Resolution R-21-22. Ms. Laduke?
Okay, thank you, sir. Once again, I'll just give a brief overview of the application and turn it over to the applicants. Representatives from Shabberton Solar and Century Engineering have applied for a CUP to construct two solar facilities totaling 5 megawatts on two parcels near the New Kent-Hanover County line. There's a map in your packet for reference, and they'll show you tonight. The facilities are proposed to utilize approximately 28 acres of the 252-acre parcels. The parcels are Zoned A1 and are designated as rural lands in the comp plan. Prior to submission of the application, the applicant held several neighborhood outreach meetings, which they'll talk more about in their presentation. During construction, the sites are proposed to be accessed with an existing gravel road off of Hopewell Road in order to keep traffic off of Baker Woods Place and Black Walnut Lane. This project will not cause any increased impacts to county services, and the applicant will facilitate training for emergency personnel. Buffers and screening will be required, and construction will be restricted to daylight hours, and decommissioning of the site will also be required. The Planning Commission considered this application at their meeting on May 16th and voted nine to one to forward a favorable recommendation to the board. The applicants have submitted a letter to the board outlining several waiver requests to the newly adopted solar generation facilities performance standards, and they'll address these requests during their presentation. I'd like to introduce John Miller and his team from Shabberton.
Thank you for having me. Thank you to Ms. Laduke, who, as you guys know, is fantastic. Thank you for the air conditioning, because, gosh, it's hot outside, and I really appreciated it. So my name is John Miller, I'm the Director of Development for Shabberton. I'm joined by my colleague Kate Potapova, who is our Development Manager, and Pete Melitz from our Civil and Environmental Engineer, Century Engineering. This is for a planned solar development off Hopewell Road, and we're here to provide more information around this project called Project Vincent, which is located here in New Kent County. Before we dive into details, just want to take a few moments to introduce you to Shabberton Energy. We're a developer of community solar projects located in the Mid-Atlantic, headquartered in Maryland, with a local office in Midlothian. And we have multiple projects in Virginia, Maryland, Delaware, as well as about a half a as well as about a half a dozen other states. We're an affiliate of the Greenbacker Group, which owns and operates hundreds of clean energy projects and currently has over two billions of projects, two billion dollars' worth of projects under operation. The project we're discussing tonight is very typical for our company. It'll have the capacity to generate five megawatts of energy, which we're hoping to qualify for the shared solar program and be able to offer that electricity generated to local Dominion customers at a discount. So regarding community solar, I'll provide a brief overview of what it is. Community solar is a mechanism in which homeowners and businesses can purchase renewable electricity without needing to have it on their roof or on their property or connected directly to their grid. Shabberton and other solar developers can develop a project on a third-party-owned parcel and be able to deliver the credits produced by that project to homeowners and businesses. We do so by offering a guaranteed savings product, so it's actually a percent off. So it's a situation where the savings are guaranteed. I call it kind of set-it-and-forget-it situation. The risk, actually, of the rate changing falls on us as the project owners. In this case, Dominion customers in Virginia would be able to become subscribers to these projects in what's known as the Shared Solar Program, which we're hoping this project will qualify for. A common question we get is in regards to how we select our sites. Not all sites are viable. There's a few, these are just a few high-level characteristics of what a viable site is. I'm going to put your attention to the first one, which is proximity to three-phase power lines. That's very important. It's generally the most limiting factor in finding a site. So the distributed generation lines we connect to are not the large transmission lines, right? Like what they call utility-scale project. They're the lines that power homes, businesses, and et cetera. Generally, these lines in Dominion can only have about one to three projects per line on it, and one of these lines might be ten to fifteen miles long. So it's naturally a limiting factor to the number of these type of projects you're going to see in a whole area. All right, so let's take a look where the project is being developed. It's located in District One, right on the border with Hanover County. You can see the parcel's very large. The solar project's only going to be taking up approximately seven percent of this total area. Parcel runs along Hopewell Road to the south. Then you have Baker Woods Place and Black Walnut Lane coming up on the west side on the corner of Hanover County, and also you have Dickerson Road, which is also kind of to the southeast side. Oh, I went all the way back. Sorry about that. All right. So here's an aerial view of the development plan. The top of the screen here is north. The entire parcel is approximately two-hundred-fifty-two acres. As you can see, we cut off a lot of the parcel for this design because of how large it is, and we focused on closer to the area where the project is. So the footprint of the solar array is approximately eighteen acres, which is about seven percent of the total parcel area. As I said, Hopewell Road along the south, you have Baker Woods Place, Baker Woods, and then Black Walnut to the west there. I'll point out a few features of the plan. First, you'll see the solar panels, right? That's the eighteen acres I spoke of. We've taken care to place that project and the panels to be well-hidden and which we feel to be in compliance with the intent of the performance standards or the standards recently adopted by the county, which requires no visibility from the nearest roadway, or you guys are calling a hundred-percent visual barrier, which we are confident we can maintain. However, our method of compliance is slightly different than envisioned by those standards, and I'll get into that detail in a little bit. We'll be utilizing a single-axis tracker system, which means the panels tilt throughout the day with the sun. The max height of the panels, when it's essentially tilted totally vertically, will not exceed fourteen feet. Typically, the height will be more in the eight-to-twelve-foot range. We're proposing, geez, sorry, I keep doing that with my papers. We're proposing to utilize the existing access road off Hopewell Road for construction access. We'll improve this road for our purposes. Operational traffic, we'll be using the entrance off of Black Walnut Lane. That'll be pickup truck-style vehicles. And we also intend to join the Homeowners Association to help provide for upkeep of that road. We've taken care to locate all the electrical equipment quite far away from the neighbors to not create any detectable noise, and we'll show you a little bit more on that in a moment. And we are leaving a robust buffer of existing landscape to all adjacent roadways. And in the northern area, which I'll delve into, you'll see on the next slide, which is really along Baker Woods Place, we're planning to supplement that with a row of evergreen trees to hit that hundred-percent visual barrier. So here's a little bit more of a zoomed-in look. So per feedback from the neighbors and also from the Planning Commission meeting, we're planning to supplement the existing tree buffer that we're going to leave with new landscaping, which is really kind of off Black Walnut Lane right there. So the plan is to leave a twenty-foot-wide of existing trees and supplement that with new landscaping behind it with evergreen-type trees that will also stay, you know, I guess, bushy even through the winter, so it provides that all-season visual screen for the neighbors. It's also important to note that part of the area, really the majority of the area we're requesting the waiver for, you can see the land just to the north, which is actually to the east there of, after Black Walnut Lane goes up, that parcel is fully wooded. It's actually owned by the sister of our landowners. That parcel's currently in an easement, and there are no plans to deforest or develop that parcel. So we're looking for credit for the existing approximately eighty-foot-wide existing tree buffer that exists on that parcel outside of ours. So getting into the variance for standards, I've gone over this a little bit. The project was designed and developed prior to the adoption of the standards. We do feel that the project as designed does minimize impact to the local community. We fully support the intent behind the standards and believe the project as designed will meet that intent, which is that hundred-percent visual barrier as reference. So getting into specifics, paragraph two E requires the fifty-foot vegetated buffer. We're requesting modification down to twenty feet in that area. Most areas will be significantly increased over that, say to Hopewell Road, Dickerson Road, Baker Woods Place, et cetera. It's just on this small area that also has the existing treeed parcel on the other side of it. And, you know, our understanding was to minimize that impact, and we think we can do that here. And with this design, we are confident to say we will be complying with what's in the ordinance, which is the hundred-percent visual barrier. Now, from Black Walnut Lane, from the road itself, the panels will be a minimum of one-hundred-and-seventy-five feet away from any point on Black Walnut Lane. Also, since the project extends across two parcels, and again, those are owned by brothers Reggie and Will Wallace, we're requesting that the requirement is to be waived totally between those parcels as well as the fifty-foot setback and twenty-five tree buffer on what is the northeast section of the parcel, which is kind of the top corner. Also, looking at the standards, it sets standards for community notice and community meetings. We held our community meeting prior to the establishment of these standards. We worked in good faith to schedule the meeting. We notified all adjacent property owners, which there was thirty-nine. It was a fairly well-attended meeting. I said we probably had at least six or eight neighbors and, you know, fifteen to twenty people. Supervisor Evelyn did attend. So we invited the neighbors via mailed invitation and a posting in the New Kent-Chicago City Chronicle, and we have submitted the summary of the meeting plan now to the department. So this is just a little bit of housekeeping, that we're not fully complying with those standards because these standards were set before, you know, our meeting was before the standards. But we did do our outreach, community meeting, and all that. All right, so this is just to show you a little more about where we're placing it and why we feel it really does have the least impact to the community. So you can see from Hopewell Road and Dickerson Road, which is where actually a lot of our neighbors are, we're well over eleven-hundred feet from there with very dense existing landscaping. And then from the closest point off Baker Woods Place, we're well over six-hundred feet. On Black Walnut Lane, we really don't have any neighbors in the project area. There aren't any residences in the project area until you get well north on Black Walnut Lane. So in terms of from where our neighbors are off those public roads, we think we are significantly set back. And then also, again, as I already mentioned, you can see that land a little bit here, the very kind of top middle. That's a fully treeed area owned by the sister of the landowner, so even though it's not on our parcel, that is there. All right, so we've chosen our construction path to mitigate the impact to the community. We plan to utilize and upgrade the existing road on site. We know that ensuring construction traffic was not impacting Baker Woods, and Black Walnut was important to the community from our conversations with them. So that's why we designed our access in such a way to totally avoid that impact. Now I'll show you some current views from pertinent points into the parcel. The parcel is currently densely vegetated with trees. This provides natural screening, and due to its density, essentially blocks the view shed within twenty to thirty feet when you're out there. It's quite dense. Also, the topography is generally working in our favor in terms of blocking the view shed. So here is from a point on Dickerson Road, and the project is well over a thousand feet from this point. Now moving down, it gets a bit west. We're on Hopewell Road now. Again, the solar array is well over a thousand feet from this point with existing dense vegetation, so we feel very strongly that there really can be no visual impact from this point. Moving further down the road, now at the intersection of Hopewell and Baker Woods, again, well over a thousand feet from this point looking in with dense landscaping. Moving up a bit, so now we're on Baker Woods, and I believe that is, let me see what road that is, Holly Stone Drive. We have the existing tree buffer right there. We have some positive topography, and the project's over seven-hundred feet from this point. So again, we feel very strongly that it cannot, will provide no visual impact. And now moving up, Baker Woods further to the intersection with Keck Circle, and you can see there's a meadowed field there, and then you can see that line of trees right there, which is part of our retained tree buffer, which is quite thick. And behind that, we are planning to put in, in our design, additional row of evergreen-type landscaping. So again, here you have a pretty-long view shed, a meadowed field, topography working in our favor, and existing and planned new trees. So as any sort of development goes, we feel, whether it be residential, commercial, industrial, et cetera, we feel this provides quite a minimal impact compared to any other sort of development that might go here. So when looking at the aerial view of the site, we touched on the location of the inverters and transformers, so I'm going to dive into some more details. Solar fields are different than other forms of energy, where you may hear the sound of turbines running or heavy equipment always operating during its operational term. Once a solar field is constructed, it really doesn't make any noise. It makes very little noise in the daytime and absolutely no noise at nighttime. The only two components that generate any detectable sound are the transformers and the inverters. We've taken care to place those more than six-hundred-and-fifty feet from our closest neighbors, so giving you a better sense of what that means, right? So first of all, we use string inverters, which are much smaller than, say, central inverters, which you may have seen in the utility-scale projects or in other projects. Our inverters don't have any AC units or fans running inside of them, which generally is the largest noise. And also, it's about the size of a desktop computer. And when it kicks on at full volume, about three feet away, it's about the same as when your refrigerator kicks on. So it's not really, it's about that. So once you hit about 300 feet away, if detectable at all, it sounds like a whisper. Once you hit over 500 feet, it's essentially undetectable, and where we are, it refers to it as most as a breath. And then obviously, there's also trees and wind and everything between us and there, so we really feel that there's going to be no noise impact coming from this project. Alright, one topic coming up more often, and was also addressed here, is how the solar array is recycled at the end of its operating life. In reality, most of the equipment of a solar project is recyclable. The steel racking is steel, right? Steel is a highly recyclable material. Most of the components of a solar array, as you can see, are also made of highly recyclable materials. And as was already pointed out, there exists at least five now solar recycling companies that are sponsored, well not sponsored, they are endorsed by the Solar Energy Industries Association, CIA, and we expect there to be significant growth and many more as these, you know, a lot of these projects will start coming up for decommissioning, but we're still 15, 20 years away. But I think the important thing to note is that it's, the majority of it is made of highly recyclable materials that are recycled now commercially regularly. Also, this is a good time to talk a little bit about decommissioning, which was brought up. The solar array causes very little disturbance, it's really just the steel-driven poles into the ground and a couple small equipment pads, you know, three to five feet. We're not talking about like a building, or a parking lot, or a large disturbed area. And essentially, for decommissioning, the installation goes in reverse, right? Panels, you know, panels taken out, racking's pulled up, et cetera. So, you know, everything can be easily uninstalled, the land returned to a natural state, we don't leave scars such as foundations, buildings, large paved areas, et cetera, that you might see from other developments. And actually, the pollinator habitat we plant generally leaves a lasting positive impact on the field, and I'll talk a little bit more about the pollinator habitat. Per the code, we are providing a decommissioning plan, we'll be entering into a decommissioning agreement, and we will be posting a decommissioning bond. So essentially, if for any reason we don't fulfill our obligations, that there are funds to do so. We expect construction on this project to begin no sooner than I would say Q2 2023, but more likely 2024. That's just due to how slow Dominion is. Construction will only run about four to six months. We call two months of that peak activity with deliveries and et cetera. After that, it's just crews kind of on site. These things go up very quickly. You plan for them for many years, and then it just happens. It happens quite quickly. We'll make every effort to confine our construction. Per the planning commission, we actually did agree to a set number of hours, I believe it was seven to five, so to not further impact the neighbors. And then after construction is complete, the solar project will have at most one or two pickup-style trucks visiting every month. I mean, it's not a cause of long-term traffic, it's very minor. So as we mentioned earlier, we designed the project to provide minimal, if any, impact to the community. We do feel solar is a good neighbor. We've had open communication with several of our neighbors. Several of them did provide letters of support for the planning commission, which we hope you guys did receive. From these conversations, just like we had back in October, we've incorporated many of their comments into our design. That does include moving a portion of the panels away from Baker Woods Place, placing them in the more remote area in the northeast corner, as well as the addition of that new landscaping to supplement the area off Baker Woods Place. We reached out to the neighbors last fall, we had the well-attended community meeting, and as I mentioned, we are planning to participate in the local HOA to assist with the maintenance of the Baker Woods Place. It's a fairly passive development, meaning there are no long-term impacts to traffic, noise, pollution, or residential density to the neighborhood. The ongoing traffic's quite minimal, and we are open to, and we've said it on multiple occasions, entering into a host-community agreement with the county to provide revenue without the need for really any services from the county. There are significant environmental benefits that the project does produce. Distributed generation solar replaces generation from typical emission-producing sources. Per the Environmental Protection Agency calculator, this project would eliminate approximately 7,400 tons of carbon, or CO2, per year. That is equivalent to over, you know, the emissions from over 18.4 miles driven, 837,000 gallons of gasoline burn, which I don't even want to do that math to know what that costs now. And then, it is equal to the amount of CO2 that can be captured by over 8,800 acres of US forest annually, so every year. These benefits are tangible, and we do believe will have a positive impact on the environment over time. So this is something we're really excited about. We will be planting a pollinator-friendly native seed mix in the array area. We partner with local landscaping companies to determine the mix, so we don't have the mix now, but that's something that we will get as we get closer. And several neighbors have actually offered to help as well, from being from the area. The pollinator habitat will invite and promote pollinators on site, such as bees and other insects. The pollinator population has experienced significant degradation due to other types of development and threatened, you know, their habitat being threatened. So we're able to promote a healthy environment for pollinators and assist in creating what's really a pretty cool, small ecosystem for them to strive. These pollinators do provide tangible benefits to local agricultural activities that can expand up to five miles from the site, or even just, you know, helping out the gardens and people's backyards. Healthy pollinator habitat will also produce soil benefits over time. Per the Maryland Department of Agriculture, as you can see, crops such as soybeans, green beans, watermelons, and apple flowers, they all require pollinators to grow. So I want to thank you for allowing us to go through this presentation. We do feel the project is of little to no impact to the local community while providing those tangible and intangible benefits. Both staff and the planning commission support our methods of alternative compliance, in the few exceptions that we are seeking. And also to address a comment from earlier regarding soils for agriculture, we did check the soils in the project area are mainly type D. Generally agricultural soils are either classified as A or B, so D is generally not conducive for agricultural in terms of crops such as corn usage. So that's essentially what's going to be in the project area. And that's it. So thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Alright, thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing real quick. No one signed up? Does anybody want to speak? Okay, I will close the public hearing. Anybody have any questions? Are you going to use, so you're the buffer on the sister's property? Are you using that in your calculations?
Well, no, we're just, we're not using it in our calculations. We are asking for the exception, which is changing the 100 feet setback to 50, and the vegetative buffer setback from 50 to 20 on our parcel only. We are just bringing the additional 80 feet to your attention as that does exist and there's no plans for that to change. But we're actually essentially buffering the area between our parcel and the sister's recurrently forested parcel.
So that's, you don't need the sister's property to make your buffer?
Not the buffer we're proposing in the exception, no.
Alright, anybody else?
I'm just curious, Mr. Chairman, if I may. Are you leasing 252 acres?
No, no, the entire parcel between Reggie and Will Wallace's is 252 acres. We're leasing, I believe, approximately 18.
Okay, so you're just leasing the land you're going to utilize?
Exactly, yep.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Steers?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. It seems that the solar farm business must be booming. Do you know how many solar farm companies there are in America?
I do not. But I do know they actually employ and generally at better wages most the standard coal or currently emission generating facilities. So it's actually one of the bigger job producers in terms of energy and at better wages.
Right. And then, and thanks for your presentation, very professional. I have a slideshow, and if I get Kenny to pull up, you have on page four, your checkbox is for property that works for solar, proximity to power lines. Do you have that, Kenny? This is just trying to be creative and be innovative instead of just going to every county and trying to take up valuable farmland.
No, problem. In the quiet time, I will say I really liked your suit.
Slide number one, Kenny. Alright, well since he's got that slide up here, I was going to show you that, this is a solar farm in South Korea, and it's on the interstate. And in between the lanes of traffic, they have all those solar panels, and not only do they have solar panels for electricity, but there's a bike path underneath it. So now you have cyclists that are traveling down the interstate.
You know, I mean, stuff like innovative things like that are fantastic, part of the problem, sorry.
This is what I wanted to show you. A lot of your energy's going to Dominion Power. There's your partner right there, Dominion Power. Why can't you put all your panels underneath their lines?
Shading, unfortunately, those.
You can't, sir, look at the sun shining.
I know, but when you really do look at it, those lines do shade. I used to live right next to transmission lines. We've looked into this, and I've actually had projects that were located, you know, a hundred feet from these, and I haven't been able to work them out because of the shading concerns. You know, those lines, you know, there's multiple of them, you call shading on a panel, it does really cause problems. And in regards to your last example, you know, those innovative projects are great. Part of the problem is they're oftentimes very cost prohibitive, so part of what makes the shared solar program really compelling is that for a competitive rate, because we're not receiving, you know, any sort of grant from the state, but so for a competitive rate, we're competing with what Dominion's doing, and we're providing it at a discount and a guaranteed savings where, as I've said, when we enter into these contracts with our homeowners, we say, you know, 10 or 15% of the credit every month, right? You don't have to worry about it. You go and get a third-party supply right now, they'll sell you a rate, and if Dominion goes cheaper, you know, the homeowner's actually losing money. So in order to be competitive, right, this is, in the free market, these type of projects we think are going to be necessary. However, we do think they do have a distinct benefit over utility scale, because in utility scale, the benefit goes to the utility, and who knows exactly where that accounting goes. In shared solar and distributed generation like this, we're looking to bring the benefit directly to local homeowners and businesses. And generally, we actually do so by first going to our neighbors and offering them the first crack at the energy and at a higher discount than we offer everybody else.
Thank you.
Mr. Duke? Well, then why are you, I'm still a little confused on the sisters. I mean, why are you even bringing it up? I guess you're asking for...
I guess it's more qualitative than quantitative. You know, we're not looking to take credit for it, because if we're looking to take credit for it, we'd meet the performance standards as is. I just bring it up to say that, you know, changes we're asking for, the 100 down to 50 and the 50 down to 20, is really on buffering that part of the property, not buffering, you know, someone's backyard, or buffering the street directly. It's really just to put it into context.
But you don't have any easement on that, so, I mean, you can't stop her from cutting the timber.
Yeah, well, right now, I believe, yeah, I don't think there's any sort of option ensuring that they're not going to cut the timber. That's why we are proposing that additional evergreen tree buffering, so we feel that even without that, right, so if you were to, you know, erase those trees tomorrow with the tree buffer that we're leaving, that we're maintaining and leaving on our property, plus the additional planned evergreen plantings, which you saw in our design, which we put in after the planning commission meeting, it will still meet that 100% visual barrier per the standards. I'm just bringing it up as explain, as just putting it into context that there's also that in addition to it.
So paragraph 2E requires a 50-foot vegetative buffer, and you're asking to modify it to 20 feet?
To bring it down to 20, and then we're going to supplement it with planted evergreens behind it, which we feel provides for better all-season screening.
But you don't have, I mean, we're in that, I mean, you're saying that, but what's really legally going to make you have to do that?
It'll be part of our conditions for our plan, so obviously, we're going to be working with the staff, if this is approved, on confirming that design, and I would be confident to say there likely will be inspections post to ensure that that standard is met, and if we don't meet those standards, we won't get our inspection approval, which will mean we can't turn it on.
So we're going to, variance, what's that? Can you explain this?
I think the language, to me, speaks for itself.
That's what I'm...
They're not asking, they're asking for a waiver from the 50-foot buffer to have a 20-foot vegetative buffer.
And then they're going to try to work it out with staff? It's done after that, after we vote on this tonight, it's over with. There's no working it out with staff.
So it's up to the pleasure of the board whether to grant that or to impose the performance requirements on...
And there'll be a 50-foot buffer still, so there'll be 20 feet of vegetated, and there'll be that 50-foot buffer, so there will be that 30 feet behind, and that's where we're planning the evergreen landscaping, and, I mean, that's going to be, that's in our site plan. We don't foresee removing that. We actually think removing that would likely cancel our, you know, any sort of approval here, but it'll be up getting the final site plan approval with staff, ensuring that we do meet that 100% visual barrier moving forward, and as I said, I'm confident there likely will be inspections at the end to ensure that we have met that requirement, or it won't be approved.
Mr. Chair, I have, I have...
Hold on. Oh, go ahead, please, go ahead.
Okay, so we spent money for a comprehensive, for a strategic plan. We have RFP out so that we can revise, correct our comprehensive plan. I have asked God for longevity. I didn't ask him for 96 years to make sure that these solar panels are removed and the property is returned to the original state. I mean, I don't know if any of you all plan to do that at 96-plus years old, but all I hear, I know you do, all I hear is the rural character of the county. All I hear is, you won't see it. That's all I am hearing, and we don't have an assurance, so everything I'm reading is if we pass this, then it is what it is. I mean, I don't foresee daily or weekly or monthly inspections, and so I just have a question about, it doesn't register in my mind for our county to be rural, and we have solar panels, and if we're supplying energy to our homeowners at a discount, then it becomes, so what is the rate that they will be paying, and how does that conflict with Dominion Energy? And we had a solar farm before that was not going to sell to Dominion Energy, and I think before they got it up, they had already sold it. And so I just ask that we keep in mind all of these things to include the comments that was made with the last applicant.
So just to point one thing out, I was a little bit incorrect in terms of the 20 feet and the 50 feet. So that 50 feet of area following the 20 feet, that's in addition to, so there's actually 70 feet, right, between the property boundary and where the project's going to be located, so you're going to have 20 feet of retained vegetation, then you're going to have 50 feet of open space, and in that open space is where we're going to be planting the evergreen landscape buffer. It's in an easement, and it'll be in, it'll be in an easement. Got it, so that's currently in a recorded easement.
But it says right here, your paragraph three requires a minimum 100-foot setback, which includes 50-foot vegetative buffer, described in paragraph 2E. Chabberden requests modification of this 100-foot setback to 50-foot.
I'm happy to make that 70.
It's supposed to be 100.
Okay, yeah, no, understand. And, I mean, ultimately, if that's the issue, and we, you know, have to, you know, adhere to the 50 and 100, we're fine with that. We were just bringing this up because we feel we are essentially buffering currently treat area that has no plans to be removed, that that's why we went for the waiver, but I don't want that to be the end sticking point and lead, you know, that be the tipping point there. So if the takeaway is, exceptions no, but if we can move the setback requirement, specifically really along Baker Woods Place, and we want to keep that at 150, 100 feet and 50 feet, we can do that.
Mr. Steers?
And, Mr. Chairman, I would just like to add that if that land was converted to farmland, it would produce 5,040 bushels of corn.
And when you say the land, you mean just the, I guess, the 18 acres of the project area?
Yes, sir, the piece of property that you're requesting to put solar panels on.
Yeah, I'll just mention from earlier, those soils are type D, which from...
I know, everybody complains about the soil until they need to plant something to eat, and then all of a sudden, it's great. You can make soil great. Especially if you got cows.
Mr. Chair, if there are no more comments, I have a motion.
Ms. Page, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, in order to address, protect, and promote public convenience necessity, general welfare, and good zoning practices in the county, I move to deny application CUP-04-22.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Is there any other discussion? Number, Ms. Watkins, all the members?
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
When I made my resolution, or my...
Can you, Mike?
When I made my motion earlier for the previous one, I referenced CUP-04 when I read it, as opposed to CUP-01. Would you like me to redo the resolution, or the, um, excuse me, the motion, or would you like it to stand on the record as it is?
I amend the motion.
You're saying, Mr.?
I read the, I read the motion for the CUP-0.
I think we can just agree that that was a clerical error you meant for the Borrego project, so let the record reflect that that motion was intended for the previous application, Ms. Watkins, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, ordinance 0-09-22, zoning ordinance amendment to establish Commerce Corridor Overlay District.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. At your January work session, the board directed staff to review the Bottoms Bridge Overlay District and look at applying that, those standards, those architectural signage and development standards to the arterial corridors amongst the entire county. Staff has done that, and before you, you have the Commerce Corridor Overlay District. This district applies to non-residential uses. This district provides additional architectural development and signage standards to those non-residential uses, and would apply to the following areas. New Kent Highway from its intersection at State Route 60 and Bottoms Bridge to the James City County Line, Pocahontas Trail, State Route 60, from the Henrico County Line to the James City County Line, Emmaus Church Road, State Route 106, from Interstate I-64 to Continental Can Road, and Courthouse Road, State Route 155, from its intersection with 249 to the Charles City County Boundary Line, and Eltham Road, State Route 33 from I-64 to exit, to the York River. Those would be the location of the New Commerce Corridor Overlay District. I want to bring to your attention one correction that I would like the board to improve in its motion. When the planning commission approved, sent to you a favorable recommendation, they did suggest a change, which I think is, should be done, approved, and that is to Section A-12 of this document. And if I could read the way that this sentence should read, it would state, "A pedestrian sidewalk of no less than five feet of clear and unimpeded area shall be provided across the frontage of the property. In all areas designated as village in the New Kent County Comprehensive Plan, all pedestrian ways must adjourn..." All pedestrian ways must adjoining one another or connect." That is the proposed revision that I would ask you to consider in making your motion.
Are you saying to delete paragraph 12?
Yes.
Delete that totally?
Yes.
I agree.
Delete paragraph 12, but, well, I'm saying to amend it to the length, to the, what I just read, and I can state that again. So I'm saying to amend, uh, paragraph 12, to read, "A pedestrian way, sidewalk, or no less than five, of no less than five feet of clear and unimpeded area shall be provided across the frontage of the property in all areas designated as village in the New Kent County Comprehensive Plan. All pedestrian ways must adjoining one another or connect." That was a recommendation of the Planning Commission, which I agree with as well.
So, Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So if we amend it and we apply, if we apply through, um, through TPO or through TAC for sidewalks, and the sidewalks are not in the village area, how does that affect our application for grant for sidewalks and bike paths? Have we considered that?
I don't think that would impact a TPO application. It would only impact the developer's requirement.
But we couldn't apply for it. If, if we make this amendment, then we can't even apply for it, correct? Except for certain areas.
I would disagree. The TPO, um, they have designated areas that you can apply for that grant funding. I don't think it would be based on our requirement to require a developer to install a sidewalk. The TPO, as long as it's in the TPO area, and there's no sidewalk there now, you could apply for funds. So I don't think this language would impact an application for TPO.
Okay, so in my district, I have an area that's not a village. I want to apply for a bike and a sidewalk path.
Sure.
So it's not in a village.
I don't believe it.
So can I apply? If we pass this amendment, if we pass it with the amendment?
Yes, you could. Yeah, yes, you could. Now, and I'd ask Kelly, I know at one time only certain portions of the county qualified for TPO, but I think didn't, wasn't that amended to include the entire county?
It's the entire county.
Yes. So yes, you, you, you could apply. It's just a matter of what this does is it takes the responsibility off the property owner. And, and because, the reason we did this is because the arterial corridor is extensive, and I don't, I think it's a little overreaching to require a sidewalk from one end of New Kent Highway all the way to the other. But in the areas that we definitely want to promote and that we want to develop in dense patterns, mainly commercials such as villages, I think it's appropriate for sidewalks.
Ms. Tiller?
So, in the village setting, you could have, could we have mixed use there as far as residential and commercial development?
The village...
So how do the sidewalks get connected at that point is, I guess, is what I'm getting at.
You, you could in, in village, and our comprehensive plan calls for villages to be mixed uses, densely compact. Although, you know, in order to get to that, um, type of development, you would have to rezone either to a PUD, or I believe that's your only option for, for a mixed-use development. And in that case, we have the authority to require a sidewalk through the PUD process. That's, that's the only way you could get to a, a mixed-use type development in our current zoning ordinance.
Can I go back with another question? When you were giving the areas of the different highways...
Yes.
When you got to 106, you said from the interstate to Continental Lane.
Continental Can.
Continental Can.
Yes.
That's heading south, I guess, on 106.
Yes, that's headed south.
What about 64 north?
We, we intentionally left that out because that whole area is in the farms in New Kent PUD, which already has more extensive development requirements.
So then I have one. So we're going to go Route 60 to James City County line, but we're going to stop 249. We're only going to take 249 from Courthouse Road to Charles City, but what about Courthouse Road on 249?
We're starting 249 at the intersection of...
155.
249, New Kent Highway, from the intersection of Route 60 and Bottoms Bridge, where it begins, all the way to the James City County line where it ends. So we're incorporating the entire stretch of 249.
But that's Route 60.
No, it begins at, 249 begins at Route 60 in Bottoms Bridge at the stop sign. And then go all the way west to James City County. That's the entire stretch of 249.
So across number 30 and going by through Barbersville by the jail?
Yes, yes. By the jail, all the way to James City County line.
Here's jail. Where's that one? Okay.
All right, I'll open the public hearing.
I can't get it today.
No one signed up. Close the public hearing. Any other discussion? Entertaining motion?
Mr. Chairman? We don't have any options on this motion, do we, like we had on the last one? Correct?
There, there's a motion in, in your package.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure there weren't any, um, changes to the motion.
Yeah, you want to change number?
All right, so I can make the motion with the change to paragraph 12, is that?
As presented.
Kadokey. Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt ordinance O-09-22 to amend Chapter 98 of the New Kent County Code to establish the Commerce Corridor Overlay.
Mr. Tiller, that's with the change to the verbiage in number 12, as presented, correct?
Thought that's what I said before you. With the change to paragraph 12, as presented, per Mr. Hefty.
Thank you, Ms. Tiller. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members, please?
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Next public hearing, ordinance O-10-22, Amendment to Appendix A of the New Kent County Code Fee Schedule. Mr. Hathaway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Due to supply chain issues, we're seeing increasing prices in the cost of meters for our public utility system. Historically, that is a cost that we've always passed on to the purchaser. And we are recommending an increase in the meter fee. And those increases are shown in the, the proposed ordinance. They do differ based on size of the meter. But essentially, in most cases, it's a $50 increase. As you get into the larger meters, the one and a half size meters, I believe it's a $375 increase, $275 increase, and, um, $350 increase for the two-inch meter as well. Also, for the irrigation meters, we're requesting an increase in the fee that we, we collect. The $50 increase for the irrigation meter. And that's construction and installation, which we cover. And if it's a, just a meter purchase only, where the homeowner is installing their own meter, it's also a $50 increase that's being proposed. Again, this is simply due to the rising cost of meters, which, from speaking with our public utility staff, we're having issues not just with cost, but with availability as, as well. So we are looking to pass that one to the, the home buyer.
I'll open the public hearing. No one signed up. Close it. Any discussion? You got anything to add? Entertaining motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt ordinance 0-10-22, amending Appendix A of the New Kent County Code to change certain public utility meter installation fees and water connection fees.
Thank you, Ms. Steers. Ms. Watkins, poll the members, please.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Fiscal year 2021 budget amendment and supplication appropriation in the amount of $16 million, $70,000 for the historic school renovation, animal shelter, and fire station. Number four construction. Resolution R-2222. Mr. Hathaway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. As you are aware, earlier this year, we borrowed $16 million, $70,000 for three construction and capital projects. As was stated, the renovation of the historic school, construction of a new animal shelter, and a construction of a new fire station four to replace the existing one. That borrowing has closed. We have received the funding, and therefore, we're asking to appropriate the funds for those uses. Per the state code, anytime there's more than a 1% change in your annual budget, we are required to conduct a public hearing.
I'll open the public hearing. No one signed up. Close the public hearing. Anybody have any comments?
Mr. Chair, there are no comments. I move to adopt Resolution R-22-22, amending the fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget and approving supplemental appropriations in the amount of $16 million, $70,000 for the historical school renovation, animal shelter, and fire station, number four construction.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members?
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget amendment and supplemental appropriation in the amount of $8 million, $880,000 for the construction of the solid stabilization treatment facility. Resolution R-23-22. Mr. Hathaway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Along with the borrowings that was mentioned in the previous request, the county also borrowed $8 million, $880,000 for the construction of a solid stabilization treatment facility. This borrowing has closed. We've received the funds. If there's more than a 1% amendment to the annual operating budget, therefore, a public hearing is required. The reason we're conducting separate public hearings from the previous hearing is that these funds are going to the utility budget, which is a separate budget from the general operating funds.
Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. Open the public hearing. No one signed up. Close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no further discussion, I move to adopt Resolution R-23-22, amending the fiscal year 2021, 2022 budget and approving supplemental appropriations in the amount of $8 million, $880,000 for the construction of the solid stabilization treatment facility.
Thank you, Ms. Lockwood. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members?
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Final public hearing tonight is New Kent County Chamber of Commerce lease. Mr. Hathaway?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Before you is a proposed lease with the New Kent County Chamber of Commerce to lease approximately 120, approximately 200 square feet of office space within the New Kent County Visitors and Commerce Center. This lease also gives the chamber access to hold meetings in our facility and utilize our conference room as, as well. This is a three-year lease. The annual lease amount is $1,200. State code requires anytime the county leases real property to a non-public body, we're required to have a public hearing on that.
A one-year lease?
Well, it's a total of three. It's one year with two renewables, I believe. Okay, um, yes, this has been changed to just a one-year lease. Usually, it's been a three-year lease with one term and two renewable leases. This is just a one-year lease that's being proposed, and we can do either one.
All right, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone want to speak? Close the public hearing. Pleasure the board, Ms. Lockwood?
If there's no further discussion, I move to authorize the county administrator to execute the proposed lease agreement between New Kent County and New Kent Chamber, County Chamber of Commerce to utilize office space in the New Kent Visitor Center, Visitor and Commerce Center.
Thank you, Ms. Lockwood. Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members?
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
I'm going to stick, skip elected officials, do that last. Uh, staff reports, do you have any? While you're up there, Ms. Hathaway?
Yes, sir.
Any other business? Yeah, elected officials. All right, appointments delegated by district. Does anybody have any?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have one, as soon as I can find it. The district. Sorry. I move to appoint Margaret Pomfrey, P-O-M-F-R-E-Y, as District Four Representative to the Historic Commission to complete a four-year term ending December 31, 2025.
Anybody else?
I'll go ahead and make one. I haven't heard back, but I'll go ahead and make it just to be on the safe side. I move to appoint Danny Green as District Two Representative to the Social Services Advisory Board to serve a four-year term beginning July 1, 2022, and ending June 30, 2026.
All right. There's no others? Ms. Watkins, will you call? Members, will the appointments delegated by district?
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Department's not delegated by district. Looks like we have a few.
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Milene Ku as the New Kent County Representative to the... as the New Kent County Representative to the Community Policy and Management Team to complete a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, and to serve a two-year term beginning July first, twenty twenty-two, ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. I also move to appoint Elizabeth Heiner as the private service provider representative to the Community Policy and Management Team to serve a two-year term beginning July first, twenty twenty-two, ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And I also move to appoint Suzanne Gable as the Department of Social Services Representative to the Community Policy and Management Team to serve a two-year term beginning July first, twenty twenty-two, ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Want to do something?
Thank you.
I got some more. I move, oh my God, to appoint Ailey Zaius as the Department of Health Representative to the Community Policy and Management Team to serve a two-year term beginning July first, twenty twenty-two, ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. I also move to appoint Joe Wright as the Juvenile Court Service Unit Representative to the Community Policy and Management Team to serve a two-year term beginning July first, twenty twenty-two, ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And I also move to appoint Jeannie Skoloski as the parent representative to the Community Policy and Management Team to serve a two-year term beginning July first, twenty twenty-two, ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. I ended with the following three planning commission members. You want to do that?
We're only doing two of them, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay.
There's two from the planning commission, three volunteered.
The following three planning commission members?
Yeah, that's the way I read it, it's two of them.
There are, in the charter, there's two positions for the planning commission. What the planning commission did in their discussion is decided that Laura Rose and Joseph Davis would be the representatives, and Mark Bennett would be an alternate.
You want to read that one?
Yeah.
Can I do both of them, or can I do all three of them in one motion, or do you want to motion each? Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Laura Rose and Joe Davis, along with Mark Bennett, as an alternate, as a planning commission, excuse me, representative to the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee. Sorry.
All right, is that it? Ms. Watkins, can you call the members on the appointments not delegated by districts?
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Next, are there any appointments to regional boards and commissions? We have a couple here that...
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Ellen Davis as New Kent's Representative to the Arts Alive Board of Directors to serve a three-year term beginning July second, twenty twenty-two, and ending July first, twenty twenty-five. Also, I move to appoint Rodney Hathaway as New Kent's Representative to the Middle Peninsula Juvenile Detention Commission to serve a four-year term beginning July first, twenty twenty-two, and ending July first, twenty twenty-six.
Thank you, Ms. Tiller. Ms. Watkins, call the members on the appointments of regional boards and commissions.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Next, elected officials' reports. Ms. Steers?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. After several years of haggling with D-DOT about the intersection of Kentland Trail and Courthouse Road, asking them to re-engineer that to make it a safer intersection, I think we're making some headway. And it looks like possibly they will be putting in or installing a temporary roundabout. And we'll be having a meeting at the Brickshire Owners Clubhouse on August sixteenth to let the residents of Brickshire be aware of it. I told them I wanted to make sure that they were aware of it before they woke up one morning and said, what the hell was Ron Steers thinking, you know? So anyway. And then during our April twenty-seventh, twenty-two work session, we approved some changes to the operations of the New Kent County Refuge and Recycling Centers. And to show you that the board of supervisors do listen to the citizens, Mr. Chairman, I move to rescind the motion from the April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two work session which approved changes to the operations of the New Kent County Refuge and Recycling Centers. That is the motion.
It was the May work session. That's okay.
Let the record reflect it was the May work session.
Okay. Let the record reflect that Ron Steers was reading what you printed for the reason.
All right, is there any discussion on this?
Mr. Chairman, you know it's gonna be discussion, and Mr. Steers knows as well. In May, when we made suggestive changes, when we adopted the suggestive changes, we said it would be a trial. We said the trial will be started in July. We have not, it is not July. We, we wholeheartedly supported our director, who in all efforts was trying to save our county money. So how many opportunities do we have to do that? Not only that, we were trying to, the effort is to standardize all of our collection stations so that on a Monday, this one is closed, the other one is open, on a Wednesday, another one is closed. So we were trying to do standardization. Mr. Chair, I'm in agreement with possibly changing the hours of operation. I'm not in agreement with not following through on this. I'm also not in agreement with not doing quarterly e-cycling. I don't think that, when I hear the comments, and no, I have not gotten but one phone call, I had no emails, but when I hear the comments of taxpayers' dollars, this was done in order to save taxpayer dollars. I don't think that anybody realizes the amount of money that we spend on trash collection. I don't, I really don't think that. I think that we utilize, we are very good stewards of taxpayers' dollars, and this was an effort put forth by our Director of Public Utilities to do just that, to be a good steward. I realize that people work jobs, and so opening the center from eight to six may not be convenient. So I am in support of changing that. I am not, I am in support of having all of the centers open from Tuesday until Sunday with those revised hours. And I am also in support of taking e-cycling out of one location, which is the main dump, and moving e-cycling to schedule, publicize quarterly locations.
For events?
For events, to be hosted probably by a Clean County Committee. And so I think that we did publicize, we did say it was a trial. I think that we have not even given it the opportunity to be a trial. And the comments that I read on social media, and I guess they run the county, on social media, the comments were that people work so they can't be there between eight and six o'clock. So we could change the hours so that they could be there and be open at least until seven or eight o'clock. They talked about our poor refuge workers that don't have holidays off. Well, if we schedule Mondays off, what an awesome opportunity. How many holidays do we celebrate on Mondays? And so at this moment, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Do you have something?
I just would like to kind of, if we're gonna rescind the entire motion, then we're gonna have to come back to those other issues of standardization.
If it passes, I think we'd bring it back to the board at a later date. I don't think we'll hash it out tonight. No, we're not gonna hash it out tonight.
No, and I think there were other things that were involved that were just impacting the time of day. Can we rescind that aspect and not change the others? Or do we have to?
I think the motion's to rescind the whole thing.
Because one thing, we never did anything with the ordinance. The ordinance was the ordinance. And so the major issues that I heard is with the ordinance, which we did nothing to.
That's what they're gonna bring back to us at a later date. Staff will. If it passes.
The residents that contacted me didn't care if it was an ordinance change or just, you know, a policy change or whatever, they just were not happy.
We haven't tried it.
Well...
All right, so we have a motion on the table.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just state that Mr. Steers was correct. It was the April twenty-seventh meeting. So that, for the record.
So Mr. Steers has a motion on the table. Any other discussion? Ms. Watkins, will you poll the members?
Ms. Page?
No.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Do you have anything else, Ms. Steers?
Oh, no. Thanks. I do, sir.
We're going on down line.
Sorry.
Mr. Tiller, you have anything?
The New Kent Girls softball team won the state championship.
Okay, I can delete that.
And the middle school boys' baseball team went undefeated this season, and I think they ended up second in their division. And the JV team at the high school came in...
Michael?
JV team at the high school came in second place this year as well, and they made it to the second round in the playoffs, and the varsity team came in first in their division, too, I believe, boys. So, all in all, baseball and softball was really good for New Kent this year. So, that's it.
Mr. Lockwood?
I just wanted to say that program near and dear to my heart, Proclaiming Grace Outreach, been operating on their thrift store on Route Thirty in Barrensville for the past twelve years, and definitely supported by the community in an incredible way. They have closed that operation on Route Thirty and are very excited to announce that they have moved to Lenexa. They were leasing that place on Route Thirty and had the opportunity to purchase the property right next to Liberty Baptist Church. And they've spent many, many months on several projects, several of which John Kling worked on for them. But they will be opening, their grand opening is this Saturday. Their normal operating hours from eight to four. And they have changed the name. It used to be called The Thrift Spot, and now it is called Grace Village Thrift. It is located right next to Liberty Baptist Church as soon as you cross the New Kent County line from James Ciggy County. And it's a really cool facility. They've done a lot of work there. Proclaiming Grace also moved their headquarters, if you will, their offices to that same location. So, very excited about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lockwood. Ms. Page?
Oh, yeah. I'm excited with District Three. First of all, I think that we have a proud father and grandfather present. How awesome it is that when you have two kids graduate the same year. So to Mr. Hathaway and Pastor, we have Julia that graduated on Friday, and then Jason Jordan. I know I was gonna get it wrong. Had Jordan that was commissioned as a second lieutenant, and y'all know I'm all about army, and he graduated. And so we are just, we know that you're ecstatic. We don't know about Mrs. Hathaway yet, but anyway, we congratulate you and Mrs. Hathaway on that. Also Relay for Life this year will be on June twenty-fifth. The hours are four to eight. It will be at the paddock at Colonial Downs. And so we ask that everyone come out as we celebrate survivors and show appreciation for caregivers, and as we raise money for research and services for those that are fighting the battle of cancer. Ms. Watkins, we are overjoyed and so proud of you with your level of excellence that you always display in keeping us together. As a board of supervisors, we know that's not an easy task, but we thank you on your education, on keeping up with your education as well. And then, as I said in our heavy heart, we have a member of the Safety Transportation Board, Mr. William Woodson. And so we send prayers of peace and comfort to him as his wife transitioned on this past week, Mrs. Claudette Woodson. And so I wanted to absolutely mention that, to mention that Farmer's Market last week had five hundred and twenty-one attendees. Woo-hoo! So awesome Saturday. Mr. Hathaway, we made it without you. But it was difficult, okay? And so we look forward to attendance on this Saturday. And Mr. Steers did drop by, along with Mr. Evelyn, so I'm telling you, everybody was in place. And then we had Juneteenth celebration on Saturday, June eighteenth, from noon until six o'clock. And that celebration will be at New Yale Baptist Church. They have vendors, fun music, so we ask that everyone come out, and also educational opportunities there. And then I am also the proud representative of a pastor in our county that has, will be retiring with over forty years of ministry service. And so to pass that, Reverend Doctor, Doctor, Reverend Doctor Milton Hathaway, sir, we thank you for all your services in the ministry. We know you will continue. And not in the ministry, but all that you do for New Kent County, which probably is thirty-six plus years. And so we just want to know that we are very grateful for you and all that you do for this great county. Mr. Chair? That can, oh, I sixty-four. For all of New Kent County that has sent letters of support, and to this great board of supervisors, I need our citizens to understand that we have been working diligently to get I sixty-four wide. And so as we await funding, and that funding is very possible this year, we cannot let up. So I'm asking that anything that comes your way with supporting I sixty-four, the twenty-nine mile gap, which the Secretary of Transportation corrected me and said that I am the connector of opportunity between Interstate Exit two oh five and Exit two thirty-four. So we are hopeful that that is a project that will come into fruition very, very soon. And so I am grateful to my coworkers in this community for your support in it. Now, I'm really finished.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Well, I think you pretty much hit everything, so...
I was trying to help you say it, I'm like... I was trying to help you say it, but I was.
But uh, uh, I would just like to congratulate all the New Kent High School graduates. Uh, I attended the graduation. It was nice to, to be back in person and, and see the kids walk across the stage, so congratulate students to all the New Kent graduates and all their future endeavors. With that.
You did a made it for you.
I know, thank you. Uh, our next meeting is scheduled, or the Board of Supervisors will be held at six PM on Monday, July eleventh, twenty twenty-two, and the next work session at nine o'clock on Tuesday, June twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, both in the boardroom of this building. With that, motion?
Mr. Still?
Ms. Watkins, poll the members?
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn.
Aye.